We have new mics. The time has come and passed for the council meeting to start. Roll call, please.
Alderman Mozeo.
Here.
Alderman Villalobos.
Present.
Alderman Newsom. Alderman Tempest.
Present.
Alderman May.
Present.
Alderman Velko.
Present.
Alderman Taylor.
Present.
Alderman Bolton.
Present.
Alderman Seager.
Present.
Mayor Cunningham.
Present. Please come to the front. We're asking Rabbi Shalom Soroka to lead us in prayer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would also like to thank the mayor, the city council, and the entire Waukegan community for honoring me with this opportunity. Just before I start with the prayer, I want to share that this Wednesday evening is a Jewish holiday called Roche Hashanah. It's the Jewish New Year. It's a very special time, but it's also a very serious time. It's not like we revel in merriment. Its observance has absolutely no resemblance to the celebrations that occur on New Year's Eve that you may be familiar with. It's a day that we are judged by God as individuals, as communities, and as societies. How do we conduct ourselves? Will we be kind, tolerant? Will we be devoted to helping others? Or will we selfish? Will we indifferent to bigotry or maybe even guilty of discrimination in any of its forms? We are judged in how we felt and reacted to expressions of hate, policies of persecution, and injustice, both abroad and domestically. We will be held accountable for how we treated our neighbors, our friends, whether strangers, our families, our wives, our children, parents. Roche Hashanah is also a time when God decides the fate of individuals, communities, countries, and all of humankind. And in our synagogues and synagogues across the entire world, the Jewish people pray for the welfare of not only our country, but all of humanity. Because it's on this day that God decides which communities will flourish and thrive in its peace and prosperity, and which will suffer or be devastated by natural disasters such as hurricanes and earthquakes that unfortunately were all too familiar with by looking at the news recently, which will be plagued by violence or ravaged by war, terror, or even, heaven forbid, weapons of mass destruction. In our great democracy in the United States of America, we have the freedom to choose our leaders and entrust them with protecting our interests, but to do it in a way that's morally just. And we must also pray that they be granted the wisdom and find the fortitude to make the right choices and the ability to succeed in fulfilling this awesome responsibility that they are charged with. And so, I drew from the wellspring of wisdom, from the wellsprings of the wisdom-filled words of my predecessors, and I ask Almighty God, in the name of this honorable assembly, the mayor of this township, members of this council, and all those assembled here today, dear Father in heaven, I beseech you to be with us. Please direct our judgment, illuminate our minds, incline our hearts, that we may think, speak, and act according to your will in the pursuit of true goodness. May truth be our guide, justice our rule, and the welfare of mankind our aim, so that this community can confront the challenges that lie ahead. May it please you to crown our endeavors here with success, to the satisfaction of those who entrusted us with such, with so importantly charged, to the advancement of plenty, happiness, and peace. May you who grants power and salvation to rulers and governments whose kingdom is a kingdom spanning all eternities. Bless our mayor, the members of this council, and all the constituted officers of government of this community. May you grant a special blessing to these men and women and guide them in all their deliberations. May you sustain them and protect them from every trouble, woe, and injury. May you put into their heart and to the hearts of all the councils compassion to do good with us and all of mankind. Let us all pray for peace in our midst and for the safety of those who put themselves in harm's way to protect us, especially our troops defending our freedom and democratic government all over the world. And to that, let us all say amen.
Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our very own Deputy Clerk, Mr. David Patterson, is a recipient of Colin Cascane Memorial Scholarship awarded through the municipal clerks of Lake County. David will be attending Phase One of the institute to be held October 8th through the 13th in Springfield, Ohio. I'm sorry, Springfield, Illinois. Everyone, please join me in congratulating David Patterson. At the suggestion of the recent transition report, our finance department refinanced two bonds. As a result, they have saved our city over half a million dollars. And I want to thank Ms. Tinas Miguelski, her staff, for a tremendous job by our finance department. The city is in the process of implementing single-source recycling throughout all city buildings. Thank you to Advanced Disposal for helping us bring in recycling at no additional cost to the city. Amazon is looking to build a second corporate headquarters in the United States. We believe that Waukegan is competitive for attracting Amazon, and we are interested. Don't forget, Emily. Waukegan is interested now. Illinois Municipal League, members of city staff, and a number of our elected officials, including myself, will be attending the Illinois Municipal League Conference from Thursday through Saturday of this week. This conference is a great opportunity for Waukegan to learn about a variety of topics and build a relationship with other Illinois municipalities. Operation Clean Sweep, our efforts to address hotspots and trash, yard waste, overgrown vegetation, is moving forward. We're hoping to be finished up in that first ward and move into the second ward, I'm assuming, if not next week, before the end of month. Thanks again to Youth Core Conservation, Public Works, Code Enforcement, the Alderman, and everyone else for assisting with beautifying our city. Anyone wishing to get involved can contact Susanna Figueroa at the mayor's office at Hurricane Irma has devastated the state of Florida. We'll continue to keep those affecting our prayers, as well as those in Texas cleaning up the aftermath of Hurricane Harvey. I want to give a big shout-out to our animal shelter. I've gotten a couple of calls, not just a couple, many calls, recently letting me know about how much the community appreciates the work they do. Let us all take a second to give a round of applause for those, for the staff members and the work that they do to keep our animals safe in the city of Waukegan. This past week was extremely busy. There was the Northern Illinois Air Show at Waukegan's airport. It was a blast. I had a great time. I know I was there, and I think there were roughly about four, five thousand to attend. The Waukegan Park District celebrated the 100th anniversary in style at Oakwood Cemetery Walk. I met a Mr. and Mrs. May, Alderman. Our 911 memorial, thank you to all those who came to the numerous 911 memorials last week. A special thanks out to our police chief and fire chief, you and your staff. Both you guys were there honoring the men and women in your, from police and fire throughout this country. A special thanks to the Waukegan Exchange Club, who had a memorial at the Hake Perforian Citizens Academy. I joined the Alderman along with Chief Wallace, our deputy chiefs, neighborhood police, and a number of other officers and staff for the 20th anniversary of Citizens Police Academy. Our volunteers do a wonderful job, volunteer thousands of hours to help our community. This is just one example of some great work our residents are doing to make Waukegan a great place to live, and I thank you. This past Saturday, I received from the Phi Beta Sigma Paternity Incorporated, new Lambda Sigma chapter, an award for public service. As always, I accept this recognition on behalf of all in the city of Waukegan and the hard work everyone here does. On Saturday, downtown Waukegan was hopping with activities. There was art walk, shred fest, healthy food truck festivals, and the mayor's first, Mayor Cunningham's first blues night. I want to thank David Motley and Jane. You guys did just an awesome, awesome job in making sure that was something that the entire Waukegan was a part of. So, thank you. Thank you very, very much for that. I really appreciate it, and you can just see it in the walk of everybody in downtown. We're coming. We're taking baby steps, but we're going to get there. Mexican Independence Day. The Waukegan hosted some great events for Mexican Independence Day. On Friday at Harbor's Edge, the Mexican Council attended along with a ton of people. On Sunday, if you were not around, we had one of the biggest parade attendance in, I think, history. And that goes out to Ms. Carrasco, to the staff here. It was just awesome to see that many people come downtown to enjoy the Mexican Independence Day. Thank you to the organizers, volunteers, vendors, city staff, who put this wonderful celebration together. This just means it's going to get bigger, better, brighter for next year. Upcoming events, the Chamber of Commerce is hosting its annual multi-chamber event this Thursday, September 21st, from 5:00 to 7:30 at the Yacht Club, where hopefully everybody can attend. There are a number of events this month at the Genesee Theater, who lives anywhere and is Wednesday, doing pianist is Friday, a tribute to Neil Diamond and Billy Joel is Saturday, Wilson Phillips is Friday, September 29th, Puddles Pity Party is Saturday, September 30th. These are some of the announcements that I have. And that being said, it is time for audience time. Madam Clerk?
All right. Thank you. Just a reminder, you have the opportunity to speak for three minutes, and the first one up will be Mr. Arthur Cobb.
Good evening, Mayor Cunningham, council members, and audience. Waukegan Main Streets Annual Meeting is Wednesday, September 27th, from 11:00 to 1:00 here at City Hall Council Chamber. Deion Bowe, Director of Urban Programs at the National Main Street Center, is our keynote speaker. Tickets for the event are $17 for members and 20 for non-members. To register or for additional information, please contact the Main Street office at[886.82][886.82](847) 623-6650. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is John Fossberg. I live in the Ninth Ward at 1570 Red Court. I left some paper on the desks of the Alderman and in front of the mayor. It's a new envelope. I'm not real deeply versed in a way out of Lake County, but I saw it on television and I saw it on the internet, and I investigated a little bit. There are police departments, something like 15 of them in Lake County, that if a drug addict walks into the police department, they don't arrest him, they treat him with respect, and they call this organization a way out, and they will be assisted in escaping from addiction. The reason I'm here to speak to the council tonight is I did not see the name of the Waukegan Police Department on the list. I've talked to a couple of people, Alderman, and I went to the police department and left some paper for the police chief. I attempted to see him, but I didn't make an appointment ahead of time, so I was unable to. I just wanted to bring this organization to the attention of the city of Waukegan because I feel that it would be the correct thing to do for our police department also, to participate. I have one other comment, totally different subject, I'd like to make to the mayor of the city. Mayor Cunningham? I attended an open house at the mosque on Old Plain Road. When they had an open house, you were there. You represented the city of Waukegan. You spoke to the congregation of that mosque as well as the other people. I thought you represented the city very well. I was proud to have you for the mayor, and I thought it really went well. I was also proud of the fact that the city of Waukegan had some firemen there and policemen there in uniform. I believe you had to have something to do with that, too. Thank you. Thank you, city council, give some consideration to the way out, and I think I saw a man in uniform back here that wanted to talk to me about the same subject, the chief. Thank you.
I'm pretty sure you did.
Thank you, Mr. Fossberg. Charles Sheridan?
I'll take a pass. My question is already answered.
Okay.
Hi, Richard Lee, Executive Director, Waukegan Public Library. I was going to tell you about our brand-new digital learning space, our Elizabeth Whitlow Computer Classroom, but the notes that I was handed said David already did that last month, so I don't have a lot to say. Some of the comments that we did hear since we've opened up were happiness is a new, clean, and exciting computer classroom. I love the new classroom. It's easy to teach. Thank you, thank you, thank you. What comes to mind is the sense of dignity that having such a nice area brings to the adult education field. We were able to increase our capacity by 25% in this space and offer more classes in digital learning. And if you haven't seen it yet, come on over. I think it's a wonderful space, and it was all done by a gift from Elizabeth Whitlow, a recently passed, longtime resident of Waukegan. We have her name up honoring Mrs. Whitlow, and I think it's a wonderful space, and it comes to us with not a nickel burden to our taxpayers. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Cunningham, and members of the city council. As you know, my name is Dulce Ortiz. I'm a resident of the Fourth Ward, and I'm the co-chair and one of the founding members of the Clean Power Lake County Campaign. In case you don't know, last Thursday, news broke that President Trump's EPA would delay and revise a rule called the effluent limitations guidelines. Pretty much what this rule would do, it would limit the amount of toxic metals and other pollutants found in the wastewater of coal-fired power plants. More specifically, this rule would set stronger limits on metals linked to human health problems, including lead, mercury, and arsenic in the wastewater of coal-fired power plants. The postponement and revision of this rule puts the health and well-being of our families and children at risk. As an expected mother, I am most alarmed about the threat of mercury pollution in our drinking water sources because high levels of mercury in the bloodstream can cause learning problems in children. It is subornant that the federal government is giving coal plants a free pass at poisoning our drinking water sources with harmful metals that are linked to health problems. As a Waukegan resident, I should not have to accept the reality that our children's rights to grow and learn as they should is being threatened by the self-interest of fossil fuel executives and old dirty coal plants that would rather hold our community hostage. Pollution from the Waukegan Coal Plant threatens both Lake Michigan and the Lake County community. The Waukegan Coal Plant is a significant source of air and water toxics tracked by the EPA's toxic release inventory. According to the database, the plant annually releases 14,843 pounds of air toxics and 683 pounds of water toxics. Such pollutants include mercury, lead, and arsenic. For perspective, just one gram of mercury is enough to contaminate a 20-acre lake, making fish unsafe to eat. It's time for us to start thinking critically about how far we are willing to sacrifice the health and well-being of Waukegan families at the hands of a dirty coal plant. Where will enough be enough? I have been speaking out and advocating for a responsible solution to this injustice since four years ago. How many more years will our community have to endure with the disproportionate burden of a toxic-polluting coal plant that has passed its retirement date and that has nothing to tow but bare minimum pollution controls? Is this what we want for our community? Is this what we want for our families and our children? This is certainly not what I want for my son and my soon-to-be daughter, nor our families, nor our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Julio Guzman? Dulce, did you say daughter? How was I?
Good evening, Mayor Cunningham, and members of city council, as well as the public tonight. A few weeks ago, we all heard that Trump's going to end DACA in six months, and many of us liked things on Facebook and used the hashtag #defenddaca, but not many of us really know the personal fear that families, our own neighbors here in Waukegan, a community of immigrants, are facing. So, in order to provide a venue and a medium for which all of us can listen to those most affected and listen to what it means to live in fear, I'm proud to say that the Father Gary Graff Center, Clean Power Lake County, the Sierra Club, as well as other community organizations have worked together to host tomorrow's immigrant rights rally. And that's happening right here, actually, at the Lincoln Plaza, starting at 6:00 PM. And I'd like to see the whole public there. I'd like to see our Alderman there. This is your formal invitation. I'm proud to say that I spoke with the mayor's staff this morning, and we got a confirmation that he'd be there at 6:00 PM, which is great. So, once again, we'll have speakers who are, who have agreed to speak. They are DACA recipients, and you'll get to hear what it means for them, this whole DACA cancellation, as well as some legal advice and what it means to truly be an advocate, right? To advocate is a verb. It requires action, and we can all learn what that means to help our immigrant brothers and sisters in this time of real fear with real consequences for Waukegan. So, tomorrow, starting at 6:00 PM, right across the street here, so just remember, City Hall, across Martin Luther King Jr. Avenue, and you'll be at Lincoln Plaza. Here are the invitations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members. Clyde Mclemol, founder of Lake County Chapter of Black Lives Matter. Lake County Black Lives Matter will be hosting its second annual banquet on Sunday, November 5th, 2017. We want to invite you to take part in this special occasion by sending you the opportunity to be there. I'm passing out these flyers. Also, I've got two dynamic speakers, Maimon Robinson, whose son was shot 76 times, a Clark University student, was shot 76 times, 20 times while he was dead. U.S. Marshals were still shooting him. His mom will fly in. We confirmed that today, and she will be here to speak. Also, I'm waiting on a confirmation that Fernando Castell's mom will be there to also speak. Also, our very own Kim Handy, who lost her son in St. Paul, Minnesota. And the theme of the night is victims' impact, and I think this is very, very special for our community to know what's really happening and understanding of the movement of Black Lives Matter. That's what I have. And if you really want to support, we have a souvenir book that we're going to do this year, and you could take a ad out. But I don't want to take all my three minutes to talk about that. I want to talk about this construction with Peter Baker. I know the vote has passed, but I drove through the First Ward, and it does not look like everybody in the First Ward is working. So, I'm trying to figure out, how is the Alderman of the Fifth Ward and the First Ward make a motion that 30% of the employment by that contract, which I spoke upon last time? I know the vote has been taken, and I know I'm just speaking on mute ears, but I'm really upset about this because there are people, citizens of Waukegan, who could use their jobs. And we didn't give a million-dollar contract to a company and say, well, he don't really have to hire 10% when the law states that, you know, you already did from 30%. You should have upped it to 50%. And that's all I got to say. I am really upset about, I am, man, Edith not here, Miss Lucy is not here, but for her, committing to make a motion like that, I understand, but I am really upset about that because the First Ward ain't really all working.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, city council. I just wanted to say, my name is Paul Ketchings with Christian Faith Fellowship Church here in Waukegan, as a matter of fact, right around the corner. I just wanted to stand and to thank the mayor and the city for the wonderful performance that happened on the, I think it was the 8th of July, with naturally 7th. That was one outstanding performance, and I think the city had a lot to do with that. And if you missed that event, you missed something that was very phenomenal. It was family-friendly. It was very, very wholesome, and I think that the city supporting more events of that nature would really be great for our city. And I just enjoyed that event. And also, this weekend, this Saturday, the downtown area was really, it really was jumping. And I was a part of it, and I, me and my wife, we came down, and I mean, the city had a spirit of festival, and it was just great. People of all races, creeds, colors, ethnic backgrounds were just mingling together and having a good time. There were no incidents. There was nothing but, and I actually seen businesses downtown, new business, and I said, wow, we ate at this new restaurant called Something Samuel, and it was great. I mean, great food and the decor that did wonderful. They did wonderful work with the building. So I'm encouraged that there's some positive things happening in our city, and I thank you, Mayor, for what you're doing. It's great. I think it's great for our city, and I think that if we would all pull together and support what our mayor is doing, that our city would go up, you know? So I see a positive move. I see a positive transference of things happening in our entertainment district. I don't know, I walked downtown, and I hadn't seen downtown that vibrant in a long time. And I think that the downtown area is on the move and is coming back, and I want us to support and to get behind it because, hey, even the Bible tells us that we ought to pray for those that are in authority positions. And I thank God for you. I thank God for you, City Council, and I, I'm with you one hundred percent. Thank you.
Thank you. Pastor Timothy Jones?
I'd like to say thank, thanks for this opportunity to the mayor and to the council. Pretty much everything that I wanted to say has been said, but I would like to say that the mayor made a comment down at Gospel on the Beach, and he said he wanted to bring more things that were family-friendly to the city, and I had an opportunity to go to the Naturally Seven concert, and I was totally amazed that children were there, adults was there, and it, it amazed me because I hadn't saw the Genesee Theater since I was a little boy. And being a pastor in this city for the last nine years, it was such a good show that I actually told the congregation that I wish every one of them could have been there. It was an awesome show. It was a wonderful time, and I enjoyed myself with good, clean fun, just like the mayor promised us. Thank you.
Thank you. Patricia Martinez? Martinez?
She just broke it up.
Good evening, Wenastadavis, Mayor, Councilmen and women. My name is Patricia Martinez. I am a resident of the third ward. I am also program director for the local radio station, WKRAS Talk 28 AM, ESPN Deportes. First of all, I just wanna thank the mayor and also David Motley and the city of Waukegan for having posted the flyer. We are still continuing to receive donations. I want to inform the community that the donations at La Michoacan Premium 2052, North Village Avenue, is continuous. As we know, now there's another hurricane coming, and there's more following, and obviously the need of our communities are there, so please, 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 please continue donating everything and anything. The warehouse is open from eight in the morning till ten at night. And I also wanna thank the mayor. Mayor, I know it was a private donation, but I wanted to thank you publicly for your donation privately, but publicly, thank you. Okay. Another thing, also, I wanted to share with everybody about Peppa Louza. We're having a Peppa Louza at my sister's station, WXLC, and the reason I'm bringing this up is not to advertise the fact that we're having one, but the one thing that I most fond of the fact is that they're going to be an opportunity to adopt and of the pets and the animals that came from Texas. So please join us. It's at the Lehman Mansion, 485 North Milwaukee in Lake Villa, and that is on Sunday. It's from eleven to four. We will be broadcasting from ten to two, but my sister's station will be there all day. So please, adopt a pet. I'm adopting a dog. I'm letting my husband know publicly right now. But anyway, so I'm just, everybody I have witnessed, I am adopting a dog. Okay. Another thing, I wanna thank David and Motley and Jane Ferry. I loved Art Walk this week. It was awesome. One of the things that I loved during it was the fact that they even had a vegan fest. And you don't know, but you will know, I am a vegetarian. The second passion besides radio is my health. And they had vegan, oh, it was wonderful, the desserts, the brownies, the, we even brought a vegan salami. It was delicious. So thank you. You guys were doing a great job with that Art Walk, David, Jane, yes, kudos to you guys. The parade was awesome. It was Mexican independence, but it was also Salvadorianos, Obradorianos, Huatematecos, and Costarricense. So kudos to them as well. And also, Cafe Charities, I want you to know that I interviewed the gentleman who's in charge of the Christmas giving, and they desperately need a warehouse. I wanted to put it out there. They need a fifty thousand square foot warehouse to be able to give these gifts to thousands of families. They're literally helping over six to seven hundred families register a day. Incredible. I was very impressed with that. So please, if anybody has a warehouse, a business member in the community, please, please let me know, because I'm helping them achieve that. And also, Julia mentioned the immigrant rally. I mentioned that on the air yesterday, and we were at the weekend at the Harbor Fest also, I mean, at the Fiestas Patres. So please join us tomorrow. We will be there covering that event as well. And I think that's all I have, and just thank you to all of you. It was, it was really a beautiful weekend. I think what they're doing downtown is awesomeness. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Mary Ellen Dunis Atlas Nettin?
Oh. I'm gonna have to use that one, though, telling the husband publicly. Note to self, note to self. Oh, you married guys, note to self.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Gloria Corona. My mother is sitting over there. She was too embarrassed to get up and left me this, this task to myself. So we're proudly the owners of A+ United Taxi and Transportation Services. We, we are in, in business for about three years in North Chicago. We provide transportation for military families in part of the city of North Chicago. We would like to thank the opportunity because we are opening our, our new office on Grand Avenue, the twenty-two, eleven Grand Avenue, which would provide a full service in the Waukegan area. We also recommend the outsiders from the neighborhood come and see Waukegan. I actually brought a couple of the sailors over to the Mexican parade, and they were so excited to eat all these foods that we're missing out, and their families. And we would like to recommend them to come over here because there's a lot to do instead of just going to the, you know, there's a lot over here to, to see and to tell. We're, we're a very nice, tidy city to come and see, so, well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Trina Torres? Trina Torres?
Good evening, Mayor Cunningham, City Council members, members of the community. My name is Trina Torres, founder and owner of Sweet Church's Retail Boutique located on Genesee Street. I'd like to address the need for continued support of our monthly art walks, downtown events, and continued operations of Urban Edge. I have owned and operated my boutique for five years and been at the Genesee location for a year and a half. When deciding to move my location from Powell and Belvedere, I moved the art walks that took place every month. Years ago, the storefront where I currently occupy my shop was the Waukegan Bike Project. I used to decorate those windows for the art walk for a year and knew of the community events taking place within the area. Because of this, it was important for me to move downtown on Genesee Street. Since becoming a member of the Downtown Business Owner District, I have seen a seventy-five percent increase in my sales during art walk events alone. The city's supporting the advertising and entertainment of these events are essential for us entrepreneurs who are not only trying to succeed in business, but attempting to build the downtown Waukegan area to become an entertainment and shopping destination for all to enjoy. Urban Edge, which is curated by Vicki Marasco and David Motley, remain a key piece in keeping these events growing and successful. The art shows that they bring with different themes every month appeal to a broader audience than just the retail establishments can provide. Not only does it appeal to our local community members, but the young, vibrant, and new-age art shows that they present cater to art enthusiasts who may not normally frequent or are great city on a regular basis. With that being said, they pave the way for these events in a life imitates art reality. Often, the displays at Urban Edge inspire us business owners to create scenes of our own to cater to a larger demographic than we normally would. Mayor, I've heard you speak on the diversity of this community and how important it is for us to unite and embrace our cultures, music, and lifestyles. This past weekend during the art walk, Urban Edge displayed art walk that could only be seen in big-city galleries. The Cafe Cultura inspired me to create an event called Coffee, Love, and Revis. It was my third most profitable event in sales since I have been in the downtown district. In addition to the Cafe Cultura with art, shopping, and food vendors, we had Latin music playing at the Jec Benny Plaza. It was a perfect opportunity for me to showcase my dancing skills, where people then inquired about salsa lessons. But the Blues Fest, which was held across from my shop, was a huge success with amazing positive feedback from all who attended. Sam, you did an incredible job. The trolley was fully occupied all night long, and my customers would repeatedly tell me they didn't realize Waukegan had so much to offer. This is what we want, what we need, and what we are trying to achieve. I used to hear quite frequently that my boutique belonged in Highwood or Lake Forest. However, things have dramatically changed because they realize that Waukegan is the new up-and-coming entertainment destination, and this is right where I belong. I wanted to be able to raise awareness to you that we need continued support with Urban Edge and the city of Waukegan to help us grow this area.
Thank you, Tina.
Thank you.
Ralph Peterson, Jr.?
Yes, I received a copy of a letter from a whistleblower, which was also sent to you, Mayor Cunningham, in reference to water contamination and public safety. I'm asking that you give us some understanding as to the water plant situation, meaning, what's your plans? What are you doing? And I would also like to state that I should not have been the one, had to be the one, who informed the public of this public safety matter. You are a leader, and for some reason, you're mute on this situation, and this is a public safety issue. And there is something going on because you hired a friend to go to the plant. Am I correct? And assess the situation, which is a good thing. But what I wanna know is, what did he come up with? You know, I mean, what's taking place? I mean, you're mute, and there is people that wanna know. And lastly, I would like to say, you have, there's quite a few African-Americans who played a major role in your victory, whom you personally promised employment to. But after your victory, you did just the opposite. You turned your back on them and hired all Caucasians. Now, this is what I want you, the audience, to know. I'm not some guy who's sitting up here saying, our African-Americans should have hired all African-Americans, but what I am saying, in a city, eighty percent minority, that is a slap in the face. That is a total slap. And what message does that send out? And Mayor Cunningham, there's many people that feel you should have made your administration at least resemble the city's racial makeup. And by you being African-American yourself and a minority, we would have thought that would have been something that can't walk through the door with you. So as I've said before, I'm very disappointed in you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Margaret Carrasco?
If anyone happened to be out of town this weekend, well, you really missed out on a lot. Just wanna reiterate the comments, the adjectives that were used associated with Waukegan tonight, jumping and vibrant, and that without a doubt was the case. There's just so many events going on, and all of them were packed with people. People not only from Waukegan, but from all over Lake County, even out of the state. And I kinda got the vibes, I just didn't realize that that many people were gonna come to Waukegan this weekend. But it started, like, I, I get a phone call on Saturday from this lady around one o'clock in the afternoon, asking me how could she get to Waukegan's parade on Sunday? So I asked her, are you coming from the north side or south side of Waukegan? She says, no, we have several cars. We're coming from the state of Minnesota to Waukegan to come to our events here. Then on Sunday morning, I get a message, someone saying, wow, did you see the huge line going around outside Chuck Wagon Restaurant on Sunday morning? It's just, the last call was the one that I was like, wow, I think we're really gonna have a lot of people this weekend, was when my media person, who I hired to do the drone footage of the parade, calls up and says, you know, we're having little problems with the cell tower because I guess they have a way to measure how many cell phones are logged into there, and it's like whacked out. There's just like thousands of people in a concentrated area on Washington Street in Waukegan. So nonetheless, I just want to say kudos and thank you so much to the city of Waukegan, the mayor, for doing exactly what everybody's saying here. These special events are generating money for our businesses. People are coming into Waukegan to spend their money to eat, to have a good time, just like they did fifty years ago. It's, we're making a turnaround. Special kudos definitely to David Motley, was fabulous to work with, also Pat Matonham, and there's just many, many persons that, if you wanna do events, this is the place to go. This is an upcoming place, definitely, and everyone's under staff, mayor, is just goes above and beyond to make them happen. The last thing I just want to mention is that it was just, I came from an event this afternoon in which, the, I have a colleague here for David, Esther Burgos. She is a director of arts, and she wants an international display.
Thank you, Margaret. Here on Waukegan, thank you. Thank you. Mayor, that's the end of audience time.
Thank you. If you have to use the mic in the future, we have new mics, and I'm trying to get adjusted to mine, too, and my voice sometimes carries, so, and I think they're over there, so sometimes you might have to push it away from you. I'm just letting everybody know in front. All right? Margaret, to your, to your end, I don't know if I said this, but our police department, fire department, and public works, they were just fantastic this weekend. To both my chiefs and Director Public Works, please send a, a good shout and kudos to your staff. I mean, they stuck in there right to the very end on everything, so I know I do, the citizens do, really appreciate what they did, and it was a lot of people, but they did it, so thank you to them, and I'm saying that publicly. All right, next, we have, motion by Alderman Mosio, second by Alderman Bolton, to approve the committee of a whole meeting minutes from September 5th, 2017. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion's had, motion's passed and carried. Motion by Alderman Mosio, second by Alderman May, to approve the regular meeting minutes from September 5th, 2017. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Motion by Alderman Timpis, second by Alderman Bolton, to approve 2017 committee assignments as presented. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Item B, motion to ratify appointments to library board. Jan, you have the names, do you wanna? Jan, you have the?
I can get them.
I got them. I have them right here. We're presenting, and everyone should have received their email, presenting three names for the library board. Evelyn Jean Smith, Marge O'Brien, Rochelle Mendez. I think I saw.
Marge Cruzing?
Marge. Evelyn. Is Rochelle here? I didn't see her either. Okay. And I apologize, Rochelle is not here, but we, we do have two out of three. Please stay so everybody can see you, ladies. Typically, what we like to do when we make appointments is certainly have those individuals present, one, so Alderman can see, most of you are well-known by most of the Aldermen, and two, for the audience to see. And we, to let you know, we do appreciate you taking your time and your energy to serve on these volunteer boards, particularly our library, where you will affect the, the many lives of our young men and young ladies in coming to an award-winning library, so we do thank you. I don't know if the Aldermen have any personal questions, or, I shouldn't say personal, but any, any questions or comments to add? You may do it this time. If not... Is there a motion? All right, motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman T- All right, motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Taylor, to approve, uh, Ms. Rachel Mendez, Ms. Mar- Margaret Marge O'Brien, Ms. Evelyn Jean Smith, to the Waukegan Library Board. Roll call, please.
Alderman Mosio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Actually, I have a question really quick.
Sure.
Since I'm on the board, would it be a conflict to vote or no? I'm not sure.
Yes.
I'll just, I'll, I'll pass.
Let's pass, yes.
Alderman Newsom. Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Item C, motion to ratify appointment to the Waukegan Housing Authority Board, and, uh, being assigned to the Waukegan Housing Authority Board is Pastor Jesus Garina. Pastor Jesus Garina, is he in the ordinance today? I do apologize, I did let him know to come. Um, I, I would make sure he's at the next council meeting, Alderman. Uh, but did you have any questions to regarding that appointment? It is to, it is to assign, I'm sorry, to add one more, that was a vacant position on the Waukegan Housing Authority.
Mayor, I have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, and I, his resume is impressive, but I just am curious why we, why you decided to choose a journey resident for the Waukegan Housing Authority Board.
Yes, he, he, his church is in Waukegan, he spends all of his time in Waukegan, in our Waukegan schools. We, I did discuss this with both, uh, our corporation counsel and their corporation counsel, and the work that he does with these young men, uh, throughout the year, particularly in the evening times, I really believe that he would have a better impact, uh, to serve since he spends a lot of time here.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Yes, ma'am, and thank you for asking. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Mosio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Item D, motion by Alderman Bolton, second by Alderman Seager, to approve resolution for the Phi Beta Sigma Fraternity New Lambda Sigma Chapter. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Uh, item E, motion by Alderman Seager, second by Alderman Mosio, to adopt a proclamation for Youth Justice Awareness Month. Any questions to the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Insurance Committee, Alderman Taylor.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, motion authorizing the proper city officials to settle general liability property damage claim number C six four five dash one five dash one zero one four eight dash zero one for an amount not to exceed fifty thousand, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Taylor, uh, second by Alderman May, to approve, to authorize proper city official to settle general liability property damage claim C six four five dash one five dash one zero one four eight dash zero one for an amount not to exceed fifty thousand dollars. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Mosio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Item C, Finance Committee, Alderman Valco.
Thank you, sir. The Finance Committee, uh, met this evening and voted to authorize the proper city officials to enter into a grant agreement with the U.S. Office of Justice related to the 2017 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant Program in the amount of twenty-four thousand, six hundred and one dollars, with a federal reimbursement of twenty-four thousand, six hundred and one dollars, and no local funding match for the purpose of in-squad computer replacement. Funding for purchases from budget code two forty, six two four zero two four four eight nine, and grant reimbursements to budget code two four zero four four two three seven. And this will pay for approximately at least seven, but possibly eight, uh, computers, uh, in squad car, uh, computers, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman, uh, motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman May, authorize proper city official to enter into a grant agreement with the U.S. Office of Justice related to the 2017 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant in an amount of twenty-four thousand, six hundred and one dollars, with a federal reimbursement of twenty-four thousand, six hundred and one dollars, and no local funding match for the purpose of in-squad car computers replacement. Funding for the purchases from budget code two four zero dash six two four zero two four four eight nine, and grant reimbursement to budget code two four zero four four two three seven. Are there any questions to the motion? I will say this, I know there were some questions, uh, about some language that was attached to these grants. I want to refer to you from Chicago Tribune, and it says, "Judge Halts D O G New Immigration Rule, Grants Nationwide Injunction." So, at this point, uh, on the nationwide, that language is not in effect. I'm pretty sure it might be appealed by the Justice Department, but right now, I think we can move forward without that concern, uh, that, that we had previous. Other than, with that being said, roll call, please.
Alderman Mosio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Next item, item B, the committee voted to authorize the proper city officials to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the County of Lake, the City of Zion, to, a relative to the U.S. Office of Justice 2017 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant Program. This is a grant, uh, given through us. Our end is, the total is forty-four thousand, six hundred and one dollars. Our end is twenty-four thousand, six hundred and one dollars. The County of Lake gets ten thousand, and the City of Zion gets ten thousand, and I so move, sir.
Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Taylor, authorize proper city officials to enter into an, into a memorandum of understanding with the County of Lake, the City of Zion, relative to the U.S. Office of Justice 2017 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant. Are those, any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Mosio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried.
Next item, item C, the committee voted to authorize the proper city officials to enter into a grant agreement with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development under the Community Development Block Grant for partial reimbursement of code enforcement officer costs not to exceed fifty thousand dollars. The grant revenue line item is one hundred dash forty-seven two forty-five, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman May, to authorize proper city official to enter into a grant, or agreement with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, under the Community Development Block Grant Program for partial reimbursement of code enforcement officer's costs not to exceed fifty thousand dollars. Grant revenue line item one zero zero dash four seven two four five. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Mosio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Item D, the committee voted to authorize the city treasurer to remit funds to the Omen Creek Remediation Group Trust to fund the city of Waukegan's share of the 2017 second installment cash call in the amount of a hundred and fourteen thousand, seven hundred and forty-seven dollars. The expenditure code is one hundred dash seven one two nine two four six three six. This is our portion, our second, uh, our second payment for, every year we get assessed for the Omen Creek Pollution. Uh, BFI is the most with one forty-six. Uh, Waukegan School District has thirty-four thousand plus, Goodyear Tire, twenty-three thousand, and Dexter of thirteen thousand. So our share again is a hundred and fourteen thousand, seven forty-seven, and I so move, sir.
Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Taylor, authorize proper city, oh, where am I, where was? City Treasurer to remit funds to the Omen Creek Remediation Group Trust to fund the city of Waukegan's share of the 2017 second installment cash call in the amount of one hundred and seventeen thousand, seven hundred and forty-seven dollars, expenditure code one zero zero dash seven one two nine two four six three six. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Mosio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Last item, item E, the committee voted to adopt an ordinance regarding the adoption of professional services reimbursement agreements, amending the city of Waukegan, Illinois Code of Ordinances by adopting Chapter sixteen, Article one, Section sixteen point two. And what this does is put the developers, all of them, on the same playing field. Some were not pulling their fair share, so we're making an ordinance to put everybody on the same, um, playing field, per se. Uh, and I so move, sir.
Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Taylor, to adopt an ordinance regarding the adaptation of professional service reimbursement, professional services reimbursement agreement, amending the city of Waukegan's Illinois Code of Ordinances by adopting Chapter sixteen, Article one, Section sixteen dash two. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Mosio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Before we move on to item seven, um, the proclamation for Youth Justice Awareness Month, we have the proclamation here, and the organization is here to receive that, and we do apologize, that was my, my fault, I was looking right at you with red patch, you know, my teacher, how can I mess up my teach? All right. Madam Clerk, can you read the, the, uh, the proclamation, and then we'll come up and present it?
Thank you. Proclamation, Youth Justice Awareness Month. Whereas the historical role of the juvenile court system is to rehabilitate and treat youthful offenders while holding them accountable and maintaining public safety, and is therefore better equipped to work with youth than the punitive nature of the adult criminal justice system. And whereas youth are developmentally different from adults, and these differences have been documented by research on the adolescent brain and acknowledged by the U.S. and State Supreme Courts, many state and federal laws that prohibit youth under age eighteen from taking on major adult responsibilities such as voting, jury duty, and military service. And whereas youth who are placed under the commitment of the juvenile court system are able to assess age-appropriate services, education, and remain closer to their families, all of which reduces the likelihood of future offending. And whereas an estimated two hundred thousand youth are tried, sentenced, or incarcerated as adults every year in the United States, and most of the youth are prosecuted for non-violent offenses. And whereas most of the laws allowing the prosecuting of youth as adults were enacted prior to research evidence by the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention and the Office of Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention, demonstrating that youth prosecuted in adult court actually decreases public safety, as on average, they are thirty-four percent more likely to commit future crimes than youth retained in the juvenile system. And whereas youth of color and youth with disabilities and mental health issues are disproportionately represented at all stages of the criminal justice system. And whereas it is harmful to public safety and to young offenders to confine youth in adult jails or prisons where they are significantly more likely to be physically and sexually assaulted, and where they are often placed in solitary confinement. And whereas youth sentenced as adults receive an adult criminal record which deters future education or employment opportunities, and the collateral consequences normally applied in the adult justice system should not automatically apply to youth arrested for crimes before the age of eighteen. And whereas youth who receive extremely long sentences deserve an opportunity to demonstrate their potential to grow and change. And now, therefore, be it resolved that Mayor Cunningham and members of the City Council of Waukegan, Illinois, do hereby proclaim October as Youth Justice Awareness Month, adopted this eighteenth day of September, 2017.
Come on up, come on up. Elementary school. You know, I, I know you, all of you, spend a lot of time in looking at our young men and our young ladies, and making sure that they have the best possible opportunity to be successful. And you're passionate about this, and I'm glad that you and the city of Waukegan are looking at this world right here, former educators, current educators, looking out for the best interest of these young men and young ladies, and more importantly, the early experts of their lives, at elementary school, at middle school, that's where, uh, if we lose them, we can gain. This, this proclamation, to me, is, is, is obviously very, very personal with you being here, and a former, a former teacher. You and I kind of grew up together in the same church, and you were just doing whatever you wanted to do. And this young man right here, now is the current principal, if I'm not mistaken, in the Waukegan Public Schools. We know you have a tough job. We understand that today's young men and young ladies are coming in with so many different things that are going on in their lives. And if we can catch them, guide them, hopefully we can save as many as we can. I have to speak to this, African-American men, Latino men, right now are most susceptible to be caught up in these particular situations. So thank you for doing this, and I have myself, and the entire city council, and more importantly, city of Waukegan, thank you very, very much. Thank you, Alderman, for your, uh, for being understanding. Alderman Tempest.
Hello, Brooks, is me, uh?
Oh, it's gonna be, I'm sorry, Larry, Alderman Mosio, I apologize.
That's okay. Uh, item A, motion to approve an order to authorize proper city officials to sell via online auction junk vehicles and equipment owned by the city. The online auction is done by Obanoff Auction Services, Inc., and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Mosio, second by Alderman Tempest, to approve the orders to authorize proper city officials to sell via online auction junk vehicles and equipment owned by the city. Online auction is done by Obanoff Auction Services, Inc. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Mosio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Uh, item B, motion to authorize the city engineering department to request ATC prepare an agreement for council review and a limited groundwater ordinance for twenty-five hundred Washington Street and the surrounding areas, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Mosio, second by Alderman May, authorize proper city official, uh, authorize the city engineering department to request ATC prepare an agreement for council review and a limited groundwater ordinance for twenty-five hundred Washington Street and the surrounding areas. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Mosio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Thank you. Item C, motion to authorize a proper city officials to approve the motor fuel tax resolution for maintenance under the Illinois Highway Code. The resolution is based on the calendar year starting in January one, 2017, to December thirty-first, 2017, in the amount of one million dollars. This resolution will be charged to M F T funds. I so move.
Motion by Alderman, Mosio, second by Alderman. Valco, authorize, not. Motion by Alderman, Mosio, second by Alderman Velco, authorize proper city officials to approve the motor fuel tax resolution for maintenance under the Illinois Highway Code. Resolution is based on the calendar starting January one, two thousand seventeen through December thirty-first, two thousand seventeen, in the amount of one million dollars. This resolution will be charged to the motor fuel tax funds. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Mosio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seeger.
Aye.
And item D, Your Honor, was a motion to approve an ordinance to authorize the mayor appropriate city officials to enter into an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Waukegan and Lake County Stormwater Management, and to purchase the property therein described. It said, um, hold on, let me get it here.
Twenty-five forty-five wrestling?
Yeah. Now, the only problem was, we were gonna hold it over because we didn't, we don't have the intergovernmental agreement. We have an ordinance, but we don't have the IGA. So, we were a little concerned about not having the intergovernmental agreement. There is an ordinance for it, but some of the Aldermen were concerned we don't have the intergovernmental agreement. So, unless we can get that, we may just hold that over till we get it. Is that all right?
Hold on a second. Frank, do, do we, do you have that, a copy of that? If not, don't worry about it. We, we, we can hold it over. Do we have time to do it?
We don't have, I think we can right now. We don't have, we'll get it, and we'll get it presented.
Okay, no problem. We'll, we'll hold it over so we can have it. I apologize, Alderman.
The Aldermen just wanted to make sure they could read the intergovernmental agreement. That's why you could hold it here.
Yes, yes, absolutely, yes. And that's, that is the correct thing to do. We certainly won't let that happen again. Thank you.
And then also, item E.
By Alderman May, I apologize for that.
Uh, motion to authorize a proper city officials to award the proposal for repairs at thirteen North Genesee Street to April Building Services for an amount not to exceed twenty-six thousand one hundred and sixty-six dollars. Funds to be charged in line, three oh seven one three zero seven two six four two nine. There was a problem with that only because in the contract, uh, Your Honor, it, they had a part of it, it said to rebuild chimney at east elevation, and its entry, I know we had not to exceed twenty-six thousand one sixty-six, but then it says, price includes labor only to install a new limestone chimney camp. It said excludes material costs, so we didn't know what the material costs were. So, we were gonna hold that over till we, and, and get some clarification on what the, what they meant by excludes the material costs. Are you gonna come back later and say, hey, the material cost of this, and now we want you to approve that? We just wanna have a little bit.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Absolutely. The, the understanding that we have, what we received from this, is that the chimney needs to be taken care of, and that was the only cost that we had right now. Because of the wording, I do agree with you, we'll hold that matter over as well. But we, but just, we, this, this is something, from a liability standpoint, we need to get taken care of.
Yes.
But I was under the understanding that the twenty-six thousand one hundred and sixty-six dollars was just to take care of that chimney because that chimney was in such a bad condition.
Yes.
But I don't like the language as well with other material. So, we get it taken care of, we have it ready for next council meeting. All right? Thank you, Alderman.
Thank you. And then the last one, it was item F, motion to approve a resolution towards proposal for an assessment of the Waukegan water quality and facilities to H.R. Green Engineering for an amount not to exceed seventy-nine thousand five hundred and eighty dollars, and, and I so move. This is a, we are hiring a firm, H.R. Green, to look into the water plant and, uh, the concerns that were raised in that letter. So, and I think, I know, the Alderman I've talked to and the mayor we've talked to, we felt a while ago that this was necessary, but we had to get a, um, a firm that could provide these services for us. Um, but obviously, the resident that voiced the concern has left. He's not here, so, I mean, some please pass that on to that person, and we did address his concerns. Um, as with anybody else in the audience, uh, we took, we take this very serious. Uh, we wanna make sure, uh, that obviously the drinking water is safe and things at the water plant are what they need to be. So, we have taken the initiative to hire this, uh, company to check into, um, the, the drinking water and these, um, questions that were raised in a letter that all of us received. So, with that, I so move, Your Honor.
Thank you. And I'm gonna add a little bit to that. Uh, myself, I received, and I think that letter, same time the Alderman did, one of the first things initially that I did, is there's a gentleman named Mr. Ernest Taylor. Mr. Ernest Taylor worked for the city, city water plant for all of the thirty years. He was associate superintendent down there. I had asked him to personally go down there and, and do an assessment. Um, we met with the union officials, uh, Local One-Fifty, is that correct, though? Local One-Fifty, they did an, an assessment within their own, uh, employees, and we both agreed, after both of our assessments were concluded, that we have an independent person to come out and speak on not just, uh, some of the concerns here, but at the total operations and the maintenance of our water plant. And I think that shows that we have nothing to hide, nothing to hide. And I can say this today, our water, drinking water in the City of Waukegan, it's some of the best on the North Shore. I drink it, my children drink it, I'm pretty sure your family's drinking it. But now that this has been raised, I don't want you to take my word or the Alderman. I'm gonna be honest, I'm biased. I believe that. But now we have an independent person who's gonna give us an assessment of not only our drinking water, but our operations. And that is what good management does here. Every Alderman on this council floor, along with myself and city staff, and I might add, the staff that, that are down at that water plant, they have pride in running that water plant. They were ready and willing and able for that team to come in and do this examination. So, you know, it's unfortunate that things are raised, and sometimes we can't talk about the things that are raised. We have to give you the proof from someone who is skilled at doing these assessments. But I am re, I'm ready for it to come. I want it to come. I'm ready to validate what I have been knowing all my life about our Waukegan water system. And whatever they may be, we're ready to take the steps necessary to improve it. I'm excited about it. So, and, and I, I really take this serious because, you know, you, you use the word Flint, Michigan. That's a scare tactic. That's simply what that is. And it's wrong. It's flat-out wrong to put that on the cities of, on the City of Waukegan. But we will find out in due time. It will give you exactly what's given to us. And I hope the Aldermen all agree with me, we have nothing to hide, nothing to hide. Never have and never will when it comes to the welfare of the City of Waukegan. Proud to say it. Thank you, Alderman Mosio. Uh, uh, it was just, you know, it's unfair, sometimes unfair that, you know, people say things, they have their right. But when you take note to what our drinking water is, that's a very serious matter to everybody up here and to the citizens of this community. That being said.
Your Honor.
I'm sorry. Yes, ma'am, you can. Alderman, Alderman May.
Thank you very much. Um, I appreciate the action that you're taking on this matter. Um, it's unfortunate you get a anonymous letter, and it could be total BS, or it might be valid, and there's no way for anyone to know. But when you get allegations like this about your water system, you have to address them. You really don't have a choice. And so, I think, um, what I'd like to piggyback on to what you're saying is, with your, um, vision for strategic planning, I, I in no way think this, even if we discover every allegation is false, in no way is this a waste of the taxpayers' money, because this, um, this assessment will work well with, um, Mayor Cunningham's strategic planning, and we'll have, we'll know more about our water plant than perhaps we ever expected to, but it's all gonna work into the strategic planning for our infrastructure. So, I commend you. I, as soon as I got the email from, uh, Mr. Long, I certainly researched the, uh, very reputable engineering firm, over a hundred years in existence, um, na, uh, international company, um, very qualified in potable water. So, I just commend your administration for taking this action. Thank you.
Your Honor, I just want to, one more. Alderman Mosio.
I, I think this, hopefully this shows that, I think if we've learned anything from history, organizations that investigate themselves, that doesn't usually turn out very well. So, especially if you, if you're an organization that is dependent on the public trust. And at least for myself, anytime we get allegations, I am definitely gonna push for a third party or experts to come and investigate those allegations, because if you don't, that's how you erode public trust. So, you have got to make sure that you get people that come in here that know the experts that can look at it and give you an honest assessment, uh, on what is happening. So, as soon as, now, the timeline on this just served, but I know that I didn't mention it, is gonna be about four to six weeks. So, we will have a report back from H.R. Green, and the council will have that in four to six weeks. And it is what it is, and we will let you know what it is. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Any more, any more questions?
One second to the motion.
Uh, motion by Alderman Mosio, second by Alderman May, uh, to approve a resolution to award the proposal for an assessment of Waukegan water quality and facilities to H.R. Green Engineering for an amount not to exceed seventy-nine thousand five hundred and eighty dollars. Roll call, please.
Alderman Mosio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seeger.
Aye.
That's it, Your Honor, thank you.
Thank you. Reports and communication. Uh, motion, uh, motion by Alderman Villalobos, second by Alderman Velco, to accept and place on the father, the treasurer's monthly reports for the month of August, twenty seventeen. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Old business, they're being done, new business. Motion by Ald, Alderman Velco, second by Alderman Tempest, to approve under payments dated September eighteenth, twenty seventeen, in the amount of six hundred and eighty-eight thousand seven hundred and eighty-five dollars and eighty-six cents. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Mosio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seeger.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Motion by Alderman Velco, second by Alderman Taylor, to approve regular payroll dated September fifteenth, twenty seventeen, in the amount of one million five hundred fifty-three thousand two hundred and fifty-eight dollars and fifty-four cents. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Mosio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seeger.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Motion by Alderman Velco, second by Alderman Seeger, to approve comp days cash out payroll dated September fifteenth, twenty seventeen, in the amount of seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars and sixty-four cents. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Mosio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seeger.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Uh, motion by Alderman Velco, second by Alderman Seeger, to approve final cash out payroll dated September fifteenth, twenty seventeen, in the amount of three thousand four hundred and sixty-six dollars and sixteen cents. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Mosio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seeger.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Uh, motion by Alderman Taylor, second by Alderman Mosio, to approve the resolution authorizing intergovernmental agreement to the.
The mayor.
Um, for, uh, agreement for the mayor to execute agreements providing certain funding for the study of sand shoring in Wa, in Waukegan's harbor. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Mosio.
No.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
I guess I would, yes, uh, would like more information. Yes.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seeger.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Uh, motion by Alderman Villalobos, second by Alderman Tempest, to approve outdoor special events. The sponsor has pu, applied under the directive of non-city, non-city government use of city-owned buildings and venues. Any questions to the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Item, item G, motion by Alderman Tempest, second by Alderman May, to approve all block party applications. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Velco, to approve all raffle sales and applications. Any questions?
Well, I think that'll be approved by you, Your Honor. Better review what, what they are.
We, we do, um, but we still have to, with the approval of the council. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Motion by Alderman Taylor, second by Alderman Bolton, to approve new operator's license for A-plus United Taxi and Limousine, per chapter twenty-three, vehicle for hire. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Mosio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seeger.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. The ordinance, ordinance is closing items. Alderman's time.
Alderman Mosio. Yeah, uh, just one thing about, uh, Operation Clean Sweep. Any, uh, Third Ward resident that has an area that they're concerned with, uh, you can contact me, eight four seven nine nine seven, seven three seven six, moisiothirdward@comcast.net. Uh, there's also a Facebook page, Waukegan Third Ward Residents, or what is, uh, Suz, uh, called the Mayor's Office, and what, or Susanna Figueroa's number, what is that, old mayor?
Eight four seven five nine nine two six zero six. Oh, correction, two five zero six. Eight four seven five nine nine two five zero six.
We wanna make sure that if we have anything out there, um, that, uh, we missed, that we wanna make sure we get the, anybody's concerned on a hotspot that's garbage or a property that's, uh, be buttoned up, we wanna make sure we can address that. Um, and that's it. Thank you, Your Honor.
Alderman Villalobos.
Yes, uh, thank you everyone for being here tonight. As usual, it's great to see how this audience, um, just wanna make a couple notes, um, everybody's been the, kind of the, almost theme for today has been all the great and wonderful events that have transpired this past weekend and the weekend prior, and, um, I went to almost every single one of them, and man, it's fun, but it's draining. So, uh, the weeks are still going, there's a couple more things going on, so, um, but yes, I, just to speak briefly about Art Walk on Saturday, it was great to walk down Genesee Street and just see so much happening. Um, I did have residents stop me and say, "This is amazing. I'm so glad to see downtown Waukegan's like this right now." Um, so again, just to kind of reiterate what people said earlier today, is, we're really doing some great things right now. Um, we have been, and just more and more people are starting to recognize it. Um, also, just wanna make note too that, um, well, I will, Mr. Girvin, I will be at the rally tomorrow. Um, I've been inviting people. Hopefully, they will show up. Um, I'm looking forward to that. I am also gonna be participating in the, uh, fire ops training with the fire department this Saturday. Uh, that should be fun. I got fitted for my firefighter's uniform, um, so I'll be geared up on Saturday, crawling on the ground. Uh, there won't be real smoke, I was told, just like theater smoke, but should still be exciting. Um, sorry, I'm a little ill-prepared for today. Oh, one thing I do wanna mention, I'd like to invite people to this. Um, in my partnership with the Waukegan Rotary Club, uh, we are scheduled to do another, uh, cleanup of the McChloe Bike Path from Washington to Grand Avenue on Saturday, uh, September thirtieth at one P.M. Um, so that may as well, should, and come in and join in, please do so. We'll be meeting at the Washington entrance of the McChloe Bike Path for that. Um, I didn't think it through, but I believe that's the same weekend as Homecoming, um, so hopefully I'll catch the rest of the Homecoming game after that cleanup. Um, and that's all I have for today. Thank you so much.
Alderman Tempest.
Pass.
Alderman May.
Thank you. Um, I'd just like to thank everyone for being here. I wanted to recognize Robert and Patty from ESPN Deportes who are sitting up here in our front row. They've been working so hard, um, to help victims from Hurricane Harvey and Hurricane Irma. They've been filling, um, semi trucks full of donations. I, I don't know where they get their energy, but they're working around the clock and along in conjunction with the owner of El Mijo Can and Micho Can. Uh, thank you for that. And, um, so I just wanna recognize you for all your work you're doing, your live broadcasting from this, and it is ongoing, so, um, there's still a chance to help. And one of the things that's really significant is that, that these, uh, truckloads that are going down from their efforts are going to communities that are outside of the metropolitan area and helping immigrant families, a lot of immigrant families that don't know where to go for resources or are afraid to ask for resources, to churches and local groups. So, it's really, um, significant, especially at this really trying time for the immigration population in the United States. So, I just wanna recognize you for your efforts, so thank you so much. Um, and along those lines is, um, you know, the ongoing issues with DACA federally. We have so many wonderful local organizations between HACAS and Mano a Mano, Father Gary Graff Center, I know Dulce, um, volunteers her time at HACAS to help people, you know, people who are in DACA, there's certain applications that need to be made right now because of the timeframe. And there, I will be there tomorrow as als, as well because there's no way that we can know what, what our immigration population feels like at this time, but their future's so uncertain. So, I think it's important in such a large immigration community that we live in that we show them, that we support them. Um, so thank you, everyone who's doing work to help, uh, that population. Um, and along that line, the public safety grants, there were some questions about accepting the public safety grants, but during committee, we were assured by accepting these grants that does not mean that we will change how we enforce law in the City of Waukegan. We were, we are not ICE agents, we are not participating in immigration efforts. That was, uh, specifically asked during the committee, and we were assured by the Chief of Police that it will, Waukegan will continue to be a welcoming community to our immigration population. So, everyone needs to know that. Um, oh, so, just a big shout out to David Motley and Jane Ferry. Um, David's been since the rebirth of Art Walk, working really hard to make Art Walk, um, a part of our community, a part of our monthly, um, activities, and I, uh, Mayor Cunningham is embracing it, and this weekend was evidence of that. I also enjoyed all the activities on Genesee Street. It was really, um, great to see Waukegan out and about. So, thank you, especially the Public Relations Department back there, David and Jane. I know you guys work your butts off all the time, um, making these events, and things come up all the way, and you guys are on it. So, um, oh, one more thing. Everything is kind of connected. Right now, there's a show at Urban Edge, and I don't know if there's gonna be another opportunity to get in there to see Marcos, Marcus Reyes' show.
Twenty-first of October.
On the tw, okay, so it'll be a two-month show. Um, there's an artist there right now who's done many, painted many, many murals in the Pilsen neighborhood, and the artist was actually on hand on Saturday night. I bought his book and chatted with him. Um, very politically motivated, very current, very relevant. Um, there's some student artwork in there, um, just really relevant, uh, statement being made at Urban Edge right now. So, I urge everyone at the next Art Walk, October twenty-first, make sure you get to Urban Edge and, uh, see this renowned artist, um, and other artists. It's, it's really a great show. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Alderman Valco.
Thank you. The, uh, mayor this evening in his opening remarks stated that, uh, he and a few of us went to the twentieth anniversary of the Citizens Police Academy. Uh, well-attended. Uh, these people are regular citizens. They've gone through, still ten-week course, chief?
Yes.
Ten-week course. Um, you learn about firearms training, you learn about, uh, crime prevention, you learn about, uh, detective work, you learn about, uh, crime scene investigation and why coppers stand around a crime scene with their hands in their pockets, and you learn about the sobriety, and I think, uh, the K-9 demonstration is still coming in. They'll learn about narcotics. You, the state's attorney comes over and they give a little speech. It's a ten-week course. It's free. You have to register for it, and I believe I heard at the end of that meeting that there was a class that was gonna be scheduled. So, if some of you wanna go in, or all of you, go down to the rear desk of the police department, fill out an application, you're gonna be investigated, okay? We just don't let anybody else in there. So, if you would like to go to this ten-week program and have the opportunity to do sobriety checkpoints on the busiest night of the year, the Wednesday night before Thanksgiving, for free. Curfew violators for free. Parking for the airshow for free. Work scoop the loop in the dead of the sun when it's ninety-five degrees out for free. All you're doing, and I'm being facetious, but all the citizens do is they do it to help the police. They do it out of their own time, their own free will, and it really is a wonderful organization, and they do quite a few things. We had about seventy-five people there. There's a multitude of cit, Waukegan citizens that, uh, that come into this program. We had one lady there, mayor, I know, I thought, "Did you help her up or something"? She was on her sixth or seventh. Once she'd gone to Gurnee or Chicago, Lake County. Uh, it's, it's amazing. So, if, if you're interested in law enforcement or just wanna see how the police work, go and pick up, uh, an application, fill it out, and it'll be a while. But, um, kudos to the Citizens Police Academy on their twentieth anniversary, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Alderman Taylor.
Um, I, I don't wanna piggyback on anything the other Aldermen have said, but I do wanna add that for the, for immigrants who are in fear right now, please don't fear coming to your Alderman, or as we mentioned, um, we do have Susanna Figueroa on staff that you can talk to, but please, no one is turning you in. Please, don't be afraid to talk to us. Um, secondly, I wanna talk a little bit about block parties. There was one, um, this last weekend in my board, and there will be another one, um, October seventh. I highly encourage people to have block parties. It's amazing how many people don't know their neighbors, that, you know, you come in from work, you pull in your garage, you never meet your neighbors. This is a great opportunity, it's a great way, um, for you to discuss issues that are going on in your neighborhood, but it's kind of a nice way of, if you don't wanna go so far as having, um, a neighborhood watch, please take advantage of doing block parties and at least meeting your neighbors and, and discussing some of the issues that you've seen. Um, so again, this year, last year I had thirteen of them, this year I've only had four. So, I really wanna encourage my board, get out there and do a block party. It doesn't, you know, some of them do very elaborate ones, some it's bring your own stuff. Like I said, some of them do entertainment for the kids, some have bands, it's whatever you wanna make it. But I highly encourage the homeowners associations or even groups that don't have homeowners associations to do that. Uh, thank you, have a great evening.
Alderman Bolton. Yes, I just wanna acknowledge the young man that, um, brought to our attention about the Way Out program. Um, definitely serve that population and encourage them towards sobriety, so I wanna validate the fact and say thank you. Also, I was able to participate and, and observe the nine eleven assembly. It was a beautiful, beautiful event. And, uh, as well as the, um, Mexican independent celebration, that was my first time, and I just wanted to acknowledge it was a great event.
Alderman Seager.
Yes.
That's it, Jim.
Hold, hold on one thing. One thing. This week, everybody doing all the activities, and I, I want him to stand, Joe, stand up, please. Stand up. Stand up, Joe. Rocker, stand up. You know, every time we have something going on, not at the beach, downtown, anything, anything that's going on in Waukegan with David, this man is there. Every time. And doesn't ask for a dime, he's just there. And I want to publicly say, "Thank you, man. You, you really, really are trooper for this community. Thank you very much." Can we give him a round? Joe, you're gonna appreciate it. Thank you. Uh, with that being said, motion by Alderman Villalobos, seconded by Alderman Tempest, to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it.